Welcome, everybody, to the regular monthly meeting of the Board of Commissioners held for the purpose transaction, the general business of the township today's date, December fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Meeting is being held in the Springfield Township Building is also being offered at a live streaming feature. The meeting will also be made available on the township's website beginning tomorrow morning. Comments will not be accepted remotely during the meeting. The instructions for submitting public comment in advance of tonight's meeting were provided as part of the posted agenda. Mr. Taylor, I understand we have one public comment. Would you like to share that?
That's correct. We did have one public comment submitted from an individual in Orland. Questioned the need for item number one.
Your agenda. Catch that thing?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Please stand and join the Board of Commissioners in a moment of silent reflection under the servicemen women placed themselves in harm's way or to help preserve our safety at home and overseas. Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would entertain a motion dispensing with the reading of the minutes. The previous meeting is written, recorded in the official minute book of the township.
I'll make that motion.
You have a motion. Do I have a second? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Hopefully there was no comment. Okay, we have six commissioners in attendance tonight. Commissioner Graham could not be with us tonight. Otherwise, we have a full slate. We'd like to welcome former Commissioner Jim. Thanks for being with us. And let's see. Board of Commissioners conducted an executive session as part of their December twelfth, two thousand and twenty-two workshop meeting to discuss one personal matter and one real estate matter. At the November ninth, two thousand and twenty-two meeting of the Board of Commissioners, the board received public comment Carolyn Schuman of Flower Town, expressing her disappointment with the manner in which the local police department had handled multiple complaints that she filed against her neighbor. Ms. Schuman also alleged that preferential treatment had been provided by the police to her neighbor due to the familiar relationship he has with a member of the Board of Commissioners. The Board of Commissioners wishes to publicly assure Ms. Schuman, the Springfield Township community, that there was no preferential treatment requested by a board member or provided by the police department, and that the individual in question has been cited for harassment on two occasions based upon evidence provided by Ms. Schuman. At the conclusion of this evening's business meeting, the Board of Commissioners will conduct a budget hearing on the two thousand and twenty-three budget. The board will also conduct a special meeting to close out the business of two thousand and twenty-two and to adopt the two thousand and twenty-three budget. Any questions or comments related to the two thousand and twenty-three budget should be held till the public hearing and meeting are conducted. The board is now open to comments and questions from the public. The board draws particular attention to those items listed on the agenda this evening. Please be advised that once the committee reports begin, the board can no longer accept questions from the floor. At the conclusion of the committee reports, public comments will once again be accepted. However, official action on those issues listed on the agenda will have already taken place. Therefore, if you wish to comment on the agenda item, now would be the appropriate time. And if you come to the microphone, if you could please state your name and address.
Dan Bennett, eleven oh four Churchill Road, Windmore. I'm up here to talk about the the letter that was sent to the Springfield Township Police Benevolent Association by the board and by the township solicitor. I guess my first question is, is they were given a deadline. And did they meet that deadline with a response to you, the PBA?
They responded that they would not do what was required.
What is the next action at this point?
That's up to the board.
Have you guys made a decision because the deadline has passed, correct?
Deadline. It's passed, I believe.
It has. It was twenty days from the date of this letter, which was October twenty-sixth. So I guess my question to that is, is how are we using tax dollars to fund an issue that you guys have no relevance over? It is a private organization, correct? The fact that we're trying to force them to remove Springfield Township from their name. Does Springfield Township copyrighted?
I I don't believe it's.
Anybody? What about trademark?
I don't believe it's trademark.
Okay, so then how can you force them to remove that from their name? Are you going to go after the Springfield Township Little League? Or the softball league? Or anything else in the township that uses the word Springfield Township in their name and force them to remove it?
No, I can answer. Well, the matter at hand, we're not talking about organizations. The matter at hand with the symbol that is an issue and is of concern to people that you're aware of, and I know you've you've personally been to other meetings.
Correct.
We've hashed this out. Multiple commissioners have given their opinions publicly.
I don't know about that, but.
Well, multiple commissioners have given their opinions publicly, including myself, and I'm not the only one. So we are not taking action on it this month. When you say they missed the when the deadline has passed, the deadline to respond, I had passed, and they did respond. And it's a matter of this board to decide what to do next, which we are discussing.
Oh, okay. Um, but again, though, it is a private organization, right? But the Springfield Township Police Benevolent Association is a private organization that the board has no authorization over, correct?
I will, in my legal capacity, I would ask Commissioner not to answer that question on the basis that it's it's a legal conclusion, or I believe it will and can be a legal conclusion.
Okay. Um, so the first part of this letter, everything that's in here talks about everything that you guys have done for the police department. It's been brought up on numerous occasions that the police department and the PBA are two separate organizations, that they're not the same. It's been brought up numerous times. So everything in here is all bargaining unit items. So it almost seems like it's a, I guess we'll call it a tit for tat. We did this for you, so now you have to do this for us. The, let's see, the budget to spend money for equipment, we kind of need that for the community, right? We need to better ourselves all the time. The privacy fence around the police department parking area. I haven't seen a privacy fence that protects them at all. It kind of looks like something that, you know, there's nothing there to protect them. You can still drive right past it and see in everywhere. The hiring of police, that's just that better our community. So I guess my question is, is why is that even part of this? Because it seems like it's a tit for tat, trying to make it a, we did this for you, so you need to step up and do something for us. I guess one would call it almost bribery, I guess, in my eyes.
Well, I would reject that characterization. There have been many people that have stipulated or contended that were very much opposed to any sort of action by the board that the doing anything like this would mean that we don't support the police. And that's just, that's false. You can disagree about one issue and not others. So the reason that was stated in the email was just to point out that there's many ways we do support the police. And let me finish, please. The PBA members are comprised of our police officers. And we do support our police department. There's very little that they've ever asked us for, as far as I know, that we we haven't given to them.
Oh, I know. The letter, the letter states clearly that you guys support them very well.
So we're beginning, it's, it's, we're just stating that we do support the police. And even though we disagree on this issue as it relates to the PBA, that is not a blanket lack of support for our police officer. Simple as that.
But again, in the letter, it states that you must demand that the word Springfield Township be removed from the name. How can we demand that they remove that from their name?
Well, anyone can demand what they want, and they can say no, which they have.
But again, I, so, so where I'm going with this, as we're spending and wasting all this time and taxpayer money, the solicit, how much did the solicitor get paid to write this letter? How was this paid for? Was it tax dollars?
If your, your view is that nothing should be done here, we should just stop.
No, I'm just standing up for this letter. It's absolute.
Well, you framed your question with, for no reason. And I would dispute that it's not for no reason. There are significant portion of our community, many members of multiple races, that do have a concern about it. And not every one is going to agree. There's going to be different groups that feel differently about something. But to say that their voice doesn't at least have merit, it's not a worthy thing to talk about, to just blankly say for no reason. I just, I don't accept that characterization. You may disagree with it. You may think it's a waste, but other people don't.
All right. So I apologize for that, then. I don't mean no reason, but it it seems like this started from one board member's personal agenda. So I guess at this point, is it safe to ask, and I know last month you said you didn't want to get into who supports and who doesn't support it. So can I ask now, who's sitting up there is for and who's sitting up there is against this?
Well, I will say this. I mean, any commissioners welcome to say whatever they want. Taking action on the PBA emblem is not part of our agenda this evening. We are not taking.
But it was items one and two on the agenda.
The one item was removed because we are not taking action on it. The item that remains is reflective of department policy, nothing to do with the PBA, which we, which is more clear in terms of what our authority is.
Okay. And then last thing I have on this is township is very big on stop bullying and this and that. This almost seems like this is a bullying act to the police department, and I'm going to stop with that.
Good. Thank you.
I do want to respond. If there's any mystery as to where myself and constituents of my ward stand on the matter, I think I've been clear and publicly stated many times that anything that creates mistrust or divide between community members in our police department is something we should really look at seriously and consider taking away such symbology or anything that could create that mistrust and divide. It's just kept, it just runs counter to what we expect from the department and the officers therein. And I think it runs counter to what constituents expect. And so, yeah, that's always been the case. I also would reject the characterization that it is one person or any general political agenda. Just again, this is about what is right for the community, and I support all that Commissioner Lee had to say.
And just one other point of clarification from Mr. Bennett, you said, starting with one commissioner, assuming you mean Commissioner Graham. Last spring, not let, spring of two thousand and twenty-one, so the issue with that when Commissioner Graham brought it to the board was October, November of two thousand and twenty-one in relation to the banner for the car show that was across Grove Grove Avenue. That's the first I ever heard of it from Eddie. But that, earlier that spring in two thousand and twenty-one, I received a call from a number of constituents who saw a sign at the Little League field in Marlowe with that symbol, nothing to do with the police, nothing to do with the PBA, purely that that version of the of the flag. I got some by email, I got some by calls, and from what I understand, other people contacted the Little League directly, as well as the township. Now, that was pretty taken down pretty quickly, and it kind of just went away. But I'm just making the point that the the issue was on the radar, people had concern before it ever had to do with the PBA and before it ever had to do with Commissioner Graham. And I believe there were, you know, that field is in my ward, but I think there were other instances on other properties where where people you know, raised concerns about it. So again, I'm not trying to change your mind or disagree. I'm just making the point that it doesn't all start and end with Commissioner Graham.
Jim Daley's kind of road Flower Town. My first question would be, the agenda items that are on the agenda tonight, if I recall, the president sets forth the agendas, is that still correct? Or you take a poll of the board?
Uh, the, the board has has input, and I finalize it with.
But ultimately, it's your decision what goes on to the agenda in consultation with the township manager. So you can reject or accept that you're right as as the president, right? So this, this paper, at the end of the day, what's on this is ultimately your decision.
I wouldn't characterize it that way.
I was president of the board for two years, and that's my understanding. Maybe I'm wrong. You could ask the solicitor. But if if somebody wants something agenda, you're right to veto it or accept.
Is that correct, Mr. Gardi?
That issue's never come up.
I don't know. I've, and I've never had an issue where I wanted something added that wasn't agreed upon or taken away that wasn't agreed upon. So I just, I've never had that.
Who signs off on the agenda at the end of the day?
I approve the agenda, sure.
Okay, you approve the agenda. Okay. With respect to the item number fourteen, the Springfield Little League, and I have no objection to this. I'm just wondering, where is the forty-nine hundred square foot indoor practice facility going?
So if you're familiar, are you familiar with pressure?
A little bit.
Yeah, so. So basically where their existing bedding cages are.
Yes.
Uh, I think they expand that footprint a little bit.
That's it to the garage.
That's basically where it is. They're going to do some outdoor, move some outdoor space for some outdoor.
Is that a township facility or is it a private?
Correct. It's a township facility.
I think that's, I think that's.
Township real estate, the Little League obviously has a use agreement, and they're taking the project.
I think it's great. It's long overdue. I congratulate the board for doing that. With respect to item number one, that's a resolution that you folks are voting on tonight. Does that apply to clothing that's worn on township property?
Really?
That applies to clothing worn on township property by township employees, yes.
How about at a soccer game on township property that someone's wearing or displaying a flag of this type? Because it's going to happen.
An employee?
No, a, a, a grandfather, grandmother, police officer, somebody wearing that flag on township property, is that going to be prohibited? Because that's, it's very vague. A very vague resolution. And what is the enforcement mechanism? Because I think the residents of the Springfield, twenty thousand residents should know what that means.
To the, to the extent it's, it's vague, I apologize for that.
Resolution prohibiting the display or use of a, of a black and white version of the American flag with a blue stripe on all township property, like with parks, this building, parking lots.
It should, you are correct. I mean, it should say township employees.
And is that? That's, that's obviously the intent of it. As Jim said, that's we're not looking to enforce.
Well, again, twenty-three thousand residents would know, need to know what that entails. And if it pertains to just employees, does it also pertain to volunteers on planning commission or anything like that? Anybody that have township commissioners?
Why township commissioner?
You're paid by the township.
Yeah, but I'm.
Four forty-one every.
I'm trying to remember if a township commissioner is, is deemed to be a township employee, and I don't believe they are.
Is it just during work hours for employees who happen to wear these or could display this on, whose kids play at a sport and are up at Laurel Beach?
I'm sorry, township.
Township employee not during work hours, wearing one of these, displaying just as the, as the resolution indicates.
I, I would not think that it would apply to township employee off duty, not in uniform.
Could that be part of the resolution?
So the res, Jim, the resolution reads.
I'm sorry, which Jim?
Well, there's three gyms. I actually was addressing Mr. Daley.
Okay.
Uh, it, it reads, uh, the Board of Commissioners of Springfield Township hereby prohibits the display or use of any image that depicts the thin blue line American flag, whether it be on township property, including a township vehicle, or an employee, including an employee's uniform during the course of their regular workday or while representing Springfield Township in any capacity. So it wouldn't apply to a private citizen who is attending a soccer game up there and wearing a T-shirt.
How about, if it's, okay, so then.
Wouldn't represent a township employee.
Just so duty, because the resolution's not part of the agenda. Was that on the website? And if it was, I forgive me because I didn't see it, but then.
I don't know.
No, I don't believe it was.
The resolution wasn't advertised. How are you voting on it? We have nobody seen it.
The, the resolution was advertised, but the, the resolution itself was not provided.
How are you voting on it?
Well, Jim, you're, you're aware that when, in your time as a commissioner, we didn't post the resolution on the website either.
Okay.
We posted the agenda item, but the resolution itself was never put up there. We actually do today in most instances, but it was.
But there's nothing stopping you from placing that on the web.
Not at all, Jim.
So just, so just to be clear, if someone goes to request the permit, use a park recreational facility, this facility or whatnot, you won't deny them. I'll cut to the chase. Someone's having a back to blue rally, are you going to deny that Francisco Park? If these flags are happen to be, whether you agree with them or not, I'm not here to argue about it, but that's going to come up. So is that part of this resolution or not? Because there are, their permit's going to be issued.
I, I don't understand the question. I'm sorry, Jim.
The question is, if someone uses a, takes out a, pulls a permit, use any of your facilities, and this flag, whether you agree with it or not, or the use of, or the display of, or the clothing, whatever, and someone pulls a permit and it's in the park, and I'll, for example, be a back to blue rally supporting police officers, and these are in the park. Is that going to be a violation or is it going to be an enforcement of that? And who's going to enforce it, the police or code enforcement?
If, if the, if it, if a permit is pulled and it specifically mentions the, that this flag will be flown, then the permit won't be issued.
If the permit's, do it back to blue rally, it happened two years ago, Cisco Park. And I don't know any permit that you pull that you would have to do that.
No, I'm not suggesting.
But if someone comes down to the park and all of a sudden you have fifty people wearing this emblem or whatnot that you folks disagree with, what's going to happen? Are you going to shut down the event? I mean, you're talking some huge free speech.
Yeah, I think the, the regulation is clear that it's, it's, it's intended for township employees while on duty, while on township property.
And what is the enforcement mechanism for that? Just township employees, just a simple HR issue?
I'm going to take that, Mike. Yeah, that, that's what it boils down to.
And then some of your discussions, we're talking about emblems that you don't like in the township or don't, or feel are discriminatory or whatnot. There's many emblems in this township for organizations and groups that you folks may not like, and I may not like. And I just think you're going down a path here, and I hate to use the word slippery slope and, and the law we always. But tomorrow, you may not like the Springfield Democratic Committee symbol. You may not like the Republican symbol. You may not like rotary symbol. So my common view is that you, you, you're treading on free speech issues and use of Springfield Township in their name in the letter, which I just, first time I saw it tonight. Um, I think there's fifty-one Springfields in the United States. So I don't know how you can take the word Springfield Township out of, out of some private organization.
Are there any particular symbols that are problematic for you?
I, I, that, see, this is where this, this debate doesn't, this isn't a debate. I'm giving public comment.
I understand.
It's not about what offends me or not. It's about what you're doing and chilling people's free speech, whether you agree with these symbols or not. I'm not here to ask you what you like or don't like. I don't really care. But I care about everybody, whether I agree with them or not, to be able to express themselves however they want. And I may find some things very offensive, but somebody still has a constitutional right to display it or wear. So, and the last thing I have is, the gentleman asked you a specific question about the cost of that letter. Without getting into the debate about the merits of the letter, what was the cost of the letter? How much are the legal fees that we're spending on this? That's a taxpayer's right to know, without getting in whether you're right or wrong, or you like or I don't like. What was, what was the cost?
It's simply the matter of the time that our solicitors spend on it.
Well, what's, the gentleman asked the question. So whether you give it tonight or not, I would like to know what the total cost for this issue has cost the township over the last two years. Simple. Because if it's, if it's this issue, what will the cost be to the next issue that you folks don't agree? And that would be my comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to speak to what's offensive and what's harmful, right? I mean, there are many things in the world that can offend for many different reasons, as we all know. But what's harmful here and what's within a layperson's understanding of what we're in charge of? One of the things they understand is that, hey, the police department works for the township, right? And folks didn't work for the township. And they're seeing them out there wearing a symbol that is eroding some trust. And to me, that's harmful. That's, and not just to me, generally, it is harmful to the trust that we have with our constituents, not merely offensive, because so many things can be offensive for, as we all know, a variety of reasons. This is creating a harm in our community.
Bob Gillies, two thirteen Woods Road. Two things, one, is the, I don't see the, the letter is not on the agenda. Is that on the agenda?
It's not.
No.
All right, I'll go back to that. Secondly, um, resolution fifteen eighty-five, I, I didn't get a chance to read it. And my last place I want to be here is the township meeting. But when you guys step over the boundaries that you're allowed to, you know, it's, we're compelled to be here, we, you know, as a responsible citizen. What is the current flag policy for the township? Township flying flags on their, on the flag township polls?
Where that we have one.
Okay, so at present, any flag can be, you know, if a commissioner asks for any flag to be flown, it could be flown or.
National flag law, but I'm not familiar.
No, no, I'm just asking if, if any commissioner here asked to fly a specific flag on a township poll for a specific reason, whether it was, you know, any, you know, let's make something easy. It was St. Patrick's Day and somebody wanted to put an Irish flag up. Could the township do that? Could the township do that? If, if one of the commissioners asks for it to be flown.
I don't, I don't think there's a.
So, so they could.
No, I, I don't know if they.
They could or couldn't. Okay, all right. So, so this specific flag that you're picking out here. Is there any other flag involved, you know, or are you just saying? Again, I didn't read the resolution. You're saying it's only township employees on township time can't wear this particular flag.
Correct.
Can they wear other particular flags? Or do they have to follow the township uniform policy?
Of course they have to follow the township uniform policy.
Okay, is, is this flag that you're talking about currently on any person's official uniform?
There have been reports of it, yes, but.
Is this flag on any official uniform? You make the official uniforms up. Is this flag, so it's not on an official uniform?
Correct.
So you're asking for them not to put a flag on an official uniform, right? But could they put something else on the uniform? Other flags? That would be, can, you know, stars and bars, Union Jack, can those two be put on?
That's, that's up to the department.
Well, you should have a flag policy there and not just point this out. Now, does this, does this flag have anything to do with, I, I noticed that Mr. Daley was talking about people having events. So if I have an event and Mr. Daley, Mr. Garrity was saying that they would not issue a permit for a flag. If I wanted to burn the American flag on township property and ask for a permit for that, would I be allowed to do so? Of course I would, because the Supreme Court always said I can't. So you guys are stepping way out of bounds here by telling people what they can and cannot do when they go to township property. If you're going to say you cannot give a permit because somebody has this flag, but they can with other flags. The ACLU has defended KKK and, and the Nazis having parades in the United States, and they have won those cases. I mean, offensive is free speech. I mean, it is, I'm sorry, free speech is free speech. I mean, you know, I may not like it, might be harmful, maybe hurtful, but it's, it's speech and it's, it's allowed to be. So I don't know why you would even consider one specific flag, one in a policy, when not considering all flags and all events. You're picking on our police officers directly. You're pick, you're using your weight of your position to make them capitulate to something that you went, want, when that, that's their private right to do so. So I don't know. Now, I'd like to ask this, you know, how often have you, you discussed this in executive session?
We discussed it several times. But I just want to point out.
Several times in executive session.
You, you seem to be conflating the two issues with the PBA and the department. We're not taking any action as it relates to the PBA symbol tonight.
Okay.
The, the, but the agenda item tonight is regarding.
You've removed that resolution at present. That letter is not going out. Where did the letter already go out?
The letter that the gentleman was referring to went out last year.
Okay, so, so how did that, how did that letter go out? Was it a vote by this board to go out?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, was there, was a public vote as to who said that letter could go out?
No, it was a, it was a matter of potential litigation and it was.
It's not, well, 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 hold, let's back up here. This isn't employee related. It's not real estate, nor is it a legal issue. All right, so you went back and the solicitor, you can go for executive, if I recall. You can go back in, like right now, if you want an opinion by the Jim, you could say, we want an executive session. We're going to hold this meeting over for a second. We're going to go back in executive session. We're going to go back in executive session, Jim can give you advice on that issue about the letter or or whatever. And then you come out here and you discussion, you publicly debate and you publicly vote on issuing that letter, because it doesn't fall under those three categories. I don't think I'm misrepresenting that, Jim. So, well, I was just told that by Mr. Lee that you violated the Sunshine Act by discussing this in the back room. So, you know, if we want to file a complaint.
Questions to me, uh, Jim.
The question is, after you give advice, is the is deliberate, are they allowed to deliberate back there without on this issue?
No, and they didn't.
Well, Mr. Lee just said they did. He just said they voted back there to to issue the letter, not in front of the public, I mean, right, run the tape back, what's that, what's that? You had Geico commercials, fill the red flag out, yeah.
The the question is whether any vote is necessary for the solicitors send the letter, I send out letters every day.
But but letters of this nature, the board would tell you to send this letter out.
Board sometimes does.
No, the board would tell you this letter, because one, but back to Springfield Township, I know you you're you're holding the letter and I don't know, you know, that means you're holding it, you're you're.
The letter was sent.
All right, the letter was sent, okay, the letter was sent, okay. Does the Simpsons pay us any um copyright fees for the use of Springfield Township in their shop?
Not that I'm aware of.
No? So Springfield Township is not a copyrighted words?
I think you had confirmed that already, right?
Yeah, as far as I know.
So it's not, right?
As far as I know.
So anybody can use it at all?
Not, no, that's not correct.
Why not?
Because it doesn't have to be copyrighted or trademarked in all circumstances.
Springfield Lacrosse uses it.
If there is confusion that uh within the public caused by something like this, then it can be stopped and it can be actionable. And it does not have to be copyrighted.
Well, what confusion is there? It's the Police Benevolent Society of Springfield Township. That's what it is.
Right.
So what's the confusion? It would be more confusing if you just said the Police Benevolent Society Montgomery County or or not of Springfield Township. I mean, I I don't get it.
Can I answer your question?
Yeah, go ahead.
There is the potential for confusion when there is a Springfield Township and there's a Springfield Township Police Benevolent Association. And that confusion is that the Police Benevolent Association is an arm of the township, that is the potential confusion.
Oh, okay, so am I confused when the Springfield Little League, Springfield Township Little League, which is now called? Is that a township? Is that a township run event, uh, league?
I honestly don't know.
Well, it's confusing to me then, Jim, because it says Springfield Township. How about the Springfield Township Lacrosse Club?
To the extent that there's harm or damages, then someone could do something.
Well, what's the harm or damage of Springfield Township Police Benevolent Association?
Well, that remains to be seen.
I I just cannot believe that you you would even write something of that nature and you, I just it, I'm perplexed at how you can go so far out of bounds, Jim. I cannot believe that you would, that back there that you were given advice, that this is something that is in your bylaws and in your rules of the township to violate someone's free speech. I just cannot believe that we would go there. I don't care how much you don't like it or do like it, as was said before. It's not up to us to choose whether we like speech or not. It's the freedom of speech. And this isn't even speech, this is just Springfield Township Police Benevolent Association. Springfield Township Little League, Springfield Township Soccer Club, Springfield Township Library. You know, what if the library has books that people don't like and we're going to now get rid of Springfield Township Library because all of a sudden the library's not doing things we want? I mean, it it it's it's just obscene.
I understand your your position.
All right, you know, everybody understands our position, but not less one of you listen. Only one of you listen, and I'm sure that person's going to be punished come election time by the party in charge.
Once again, I just want to say, obviously, I like to allow everyone to speak and I try my best to be sure you're heard and I'm hearing you, receive you, or I don't want to necessarily say that you're not being heard here. I mean, you're you're suggesting that we're not listening to you, of course, we're listening to you, we're here. But again, it is harmful to many constituents here in this community now continue to say that that's the case. It may not be that way to you, that may not be your experience, of course, I understand that. But for those who are who are experiencing that, I think it's absolutely fair to to understand it and to try to remove that harm.
I use the word harmful, what is harmful?
Harmful in many things, right?
No, what is harmful, what is what what is harmful about the word, about Springfield Township Benevolent Association?
What's harmful right now?
No harmful, I don't want subjective, I want harm, what harm is being caused?
We're talking about community members in this community who feel.
That's not harm, what is the harm, please?
Gillies, let her finish, you asked your question, let her finish.
Well, I asked, the question is what is harm?
The harm is that they are feeling oppressed by this symbology, all right? And that's just something that I don't think any of us want any constituent to feel as they interact with our police department, as they interact with our township. I just don't see that that's the direction we want to take here, and it's concerning, how about that? And I think it's well within our right to address things that affect our constituents and their relationship with the township.
You're animalizing words of harm and feelings. And they're totally different. Harm is has a legal term to it, and there's no harm being committed here.
I mean, we can, we can hash out the definitions of harm, offense, all these things.
It it, you know, you just can't change words around it. I mean, I know we like to do that today, boys, girls, whatever, we change words like crazy. Harm is harm and feelings are feelings.
And to me, the the fact that there are community members here who feel that way is harmful to our relationship with the community.
Well, I feel bad that when you raise my taxes, will you not raise my taxes? Because that harms me.
It's something to consider, right?
Huh, well, you know, then lower them, could you lower them twenty percent?
And and to to Commissioner Lee's point, we're listening to many constituents and understanding the situation from any sides. And where we land does require us to listen to everyone.
No, there's a set of bylaws, there's something called the Constitution.
There's no reason not to take into account everyone's position on this.
Pennsylvania has a constitution, the United States has a constitution, Springfield Township has a set of rules to follow, first class township rules. You're violating all three.
That's your suggestion?
It's not my suggestion, it's it's, the Supreme Court's already said, you can burn an American flag. I if you can burn an American flag, I'm pretty sure you can hang this flag up or have this flag on a park if you if you're having a police event. And I don't think there's any harm in this flag.
That's your opinion?
Thank you.
Mary Ellen Reeves, two fourteen Station Avenue. I cannot even believe we're here again. When this issue came up, I asked what the genesis of this was. No one has been able to tell me. I'm at home listening to this on Zoom and I hear, well, some township residents don't like it and some this and some that. Well, how about all the township presidents that support it? There seems to be a one, one, one thought here. How about people that support it? How about the people that are supporting the police and feel that you are overstepping not only constitutionally, but because you are responsible for increasing salaries or decreasing salaries of the police that work for this township? And by the way, protect us from crime that happens every single day right outside of our borders. Do you, do you know how that makes me feel? Does anybody care about that? I heard all of you being accused of as using racial slurs at the last board meeting and nobody spoke up. You know how that makes me feel? I don't know who I'm talking to. So choosing words wisely is probably probably the most important thing here. And to say that there are some people that are offended and some people have told you, nobody has given me anything quantifiable. And so bring this issue forth without absolutely any evidence, even though it's against the Constitution. What, how are we supposed to react? Okay. Do what you want. No. That's not how this is not even, that's not even how parliamentary procedure works. Am I have I lost my mind? I mean, Montgomery County is raising taxes eight percent this year. That's the county. Who knows with Springfield's, I want it already, I know I already had to pay more. And this is the issue we keep coming back to and back to and back to, and it's divisive. And I don't see a ton of people here for the support of it. I don't say it's a am I losing my mind here? I don't think so. I think we all know what's going on here. Okay, I think we all know what's going on here. And I think we're all afraid to say, because you know what? Nobody wants to say, oh, we support the police. Well, we support the police. Whether it be the PBA, whether it be our state troopers, no matter whom, we support them. And we will not we will not have them degraded by taking down a symbol for a Police Benevolent Association that does so much good for this township. I ask you to think about that because I wouldn't want any of you to think, I wouldn't want to have anyone here to be of poor character. But do not give me a quantifiable reason, number, who, what, where, said they hate this, who's trigger, who's this? This is silly, this is silliness, and you know it.
Any other comments?
What Mike Taylor read is completely different than the version on the agenda here. And the last twenty minutes is morphed into, Mike said, uh, someone being on township property, a policeman wearing a T-shirt, not allowed to do that. Morphed into you wouldn't sign, you potentially wouldn't sign a, sign off on a black back to blue rally. I mean, this is more way more than what Mike Taylor read in that resolution. And to go on what what Jim said, how do we, how do you enforce this? What we've talked about is completely different than the three or four sentences that Mike Taylor read as the resolution. We've morphed completely above and beyond those three or four sentences, that's my only comment. I mean, we went from just saying you can't wear a T-shirt on while you're working or to saying we're not going to allow a an event at Cisco Park potentially because you have T-shirts that are getting handed out. I mean, that's two completely different things. I wish you could clarify.
Thank you.
I have one question. I have one question. So are we going to be policing the employees' vehicles to see what's on them when they park on township grounds? Because that's what's next. If they can't wear it in the hallway coming into the locker room to do the work, then we're going to be checking their cars. Silenced.
So we 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 talk about this letter again, um, I know there's a lot of the community that wants to know what this letter is that wasn't actually told, so I just want to take this time to read the letter that our tax dollars paid for that we spent money to send to the Police Benevolent Association, the Springfield Township Police Benevolent Association. So this letter reads, it's from Whistler Pearlstein LLP. Sent via certified mail and first-class mail, Springfield Township Police Benevolent Association with an address. Ari, removal of the Blue Lives Matter flag. Dear Springfield Township Police Benevolent Association, as you know, Springfield Township has enjoyed a supportive relationship with our police department and the Springfield Township Police Benevolent Association, the PBA, for many years. In fact, just in the last year, the Board of Commissioners has appointed three new patrolmen so that all the members of the department would have the time to attend some of the additional training opportunities that are currently available. Has budgeted and spent more than one hundred and fifty thousand dollars for equipment and other non-salary requests of the police department. Erected a privacy fence around the police department parking area as requested by the officers. Authorized and paid for photographic portraits and a baseball card program to introduce officers to the community. Agreed to provide medical benefits to the two most recent police hires prior to their normal eligibility dates and agreed to the terms of a generous contract extension. First time in sixteen years that a collective bargaining unit contract was settled amicably. However, as you are further aware, many of the residents are recently expressing deep kiss discontent and distrust of the PBA and even the township's own police department due to the PBA's use of the flag, which has become known as the Blue Lives Matter flag. This Blue Lives Matter flag has been at the center of the controversy between minority communities and law enforcement officials across the country. In fact, due to white nationalist movements, usurp- usurpation and display of the Blue Lives Matter flag, the flag has also received a reputation as representing many of the racially divisive movements. As a result, the display of the of the Blue Lives Matter flag unnecessarily exacerbates the ongoing conflict between the police officers and the communities they serve. To many members of the Springfield Township community, the utilization, the the utilization of the Blue Lives Matter flag by the PBA appears to express support of this of the system systemic oppression of minority communities and discriminatory police practices in other locations. Unavoidably, the display of this flag by the PBA sends a negative message to these community members and causes further distrust of our officers when displayed. Obviously, these messages are not sanctioned by Springfield Township nor its police department and seriously harm the well-deserved reputations of both. Therefore, regardless of the history or original intent of the PBA in display, in displaying the Blue Lives Matter flag, it is unfit to represent any entity or association affiliated with the township. And we hereby request that the PBA and its members cease any use of the Blue Lives Matter flag in order to prevent any confusion about whether the flag is deemed to represent either Springfield Township or the Springfield Township Police Department. If the PBA declines to remove all display and depiction of this flag from its entity materials within twenty days from the date of this letter, the township must demand that the word Springfield Township be immediately removed from the name of the PBA and the PBA cease and eliminate any reference to Springfield Township from any and all of its internal and publicly distributed materials. We hope to continue to foster the PBA's goal of integrity, professionalism, and respect in law enforcement, a mission that the township has supported for a very long time. We hope this issue can be resolved swiftly and amicably in order to protect the public trust in our police force and our entire township. While we understand that individuals within the PBA may have only positive intentions and different standards for what this symbolized symbolism is meant to represent, we sincerely believe that the PBA's decision to continue to cling to a symbol that creates so much divisiveness will be short sighted and detrimental to our shared values and service to our entire community. Sincerely, James J. Garrity Township Solicitor and also sound signed by Michael Taylor Township Manager. Um, so I just wanted to make that public record now since our tax dollars did pay for that. And that was a public letter at this point. Um, so again, I I asked and it was also brought up again about the cost that was spent for this, so can we have a date that we can have that out to the public so we know how much you are spending on all of this?
Sure, sure.
Thank you.
Bob Gillies, two thirteen Woods Road, that's the first I've heard the letter, I just heard about it. So when you say in the beginning, all these great things you did for the police, are you now going to, I mean, it sounds to me like a veiled threat, are you going to remove all that stuff? Or are you going to, in the future, not give them certain things that they asked for? Because clearly, you were magnanimous in telling them all the good things you did before. And that was while they had this flag already on their on their arm. So why why was that brought up in the letter all, all the good things, you know, why did you sort of talk about their, you know, we graciously gave health insurance to the two new police officers, we we put a fence up, we did all this great stuff for you, and you're not going to capitulate to us?
Another gentleman asked the same of that question, I think he came in a little bit after.
Okay, well, I, you know, like I said, I didn't want to be here, but.
He did address that, but you know. He did address that, but you know. Mature organization can disagree about one issue and not be petty about others. The reason that was in the letter was that many people came and spoke claiming that. Our view on this issue means that we don't support our police department and try to tie it all together, which I just reject. You can have an earnest, good faith disagreement about something. And, and not disagree about other things and still act in a professional manner. We're just reminding them that the majority of things that our police department needs and has requested and needed. Has been granted to this board. We have not tried to cut their budget. We haven't said no to the many things. We were just demonstrating. Yes, we do support our police department. Having a disagreement about this doesn't change that.
But is, is clearly in that letter, you know.
I'll answer your question. Are we going to be petty and not support them because of this? Because they said no, the answer is no.
All right. And if they say no, you said that before too. You said you weren't gonna be petty. And now you're being petty by telling them to take Springfield Township off their, off their PBA. I mean, that's clearly being petty. Now, you used the word many, many residents. Could you quantify many? I mean, many in this room would be six if there was many. Six would be a lot of people in this room. So, you know, the township is 7,200 homes, I believe, you know. So did you quantify many? Did you ever put out a, you know, anything that? Any type of research or anything? I mean, because it just seems. Clearly, this letter was a sledgehammer to the, to not only Constitution, but to the PBA. Thanks.
Any other comments? Thank you. This time we are going to enter our committee reports. And I will start with Resolution 1585 regarding the police flag. I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt Resolution 1585 prohibiting the display or use of any image that depicts a black and white version. Of the American flag with a blue stripe, whether it be on township property, including a township vehicle. Or an employee, including an employee's uniform during the course of their regular workday. Were wild representing Springfield Township in any capacity. That is my motion. We have a second? Any questions or comments on the motion?
Yeah, I got some, I mean, I think we should talk about it. It's the first time that we're looking at this resolution, and there were a lot of. Number one. As our current uniform policy exists. I would think that that would cover. Any items that might be outside of official uniform. Is that correct?
Yeah, they're only permitted to wear prescribed uniforms, badges, insignia, or other clothing while they're on duty. That comes through?
No.
All right. So yeah, they're only permitted to wear the prescribed uniforms, badges, insignia, and other clothing. That the department approves. As part of the uniform.
Okay. So that would, I mean, the way the current policy is, that would cover any outside symbols or.
Correct.
Items. Okay. And it was brought up by some of the public questions, but. You know. This addresses one particular symbol, but let's say, you know, a veteran wanted to wear a flag with a green line through it. Or a firefighter wanted to wear one with a red line through it. Would we have to do individual resolutions for each of those items? To address that?
If you wanted to prohibit them altogether.
My inclination would be that. We incorporate this as part of the overall conversation. That we're having with regards to. The policy towards the symbol. And so to that end, I would ask that we. Addresses at a time where we're ready to talk about. All the actions associated with what this board is going to do moving forward. I've pleaded with this board that we try to bridge this issue in a way where we. Listen to both sides and listen to their concerns. And, and I think some of us have done that. I don't know if all of us have done that. And it's a process, takes time. But this is a very heavy-handed. Measure that that does seem to be very punitive. Directed at a very specific issue that I don't think. Adds any value to debate, if only anything, it brings us further apart. And brings us further away from any sort of resolution that would benefit this township. And frankly, moves us closer towards. Resolution that is going to harm this township. So. That's where I would stand on this.
I think there's been many concerns about what's within our purview, right? And I think last month we had groups, those who don't align with the symbol or have concerns about it. They said, what, what can we do here within our complete clear purview? And it was advice, my understanding, its solicitors, that we can prohibit it here at the township building. You know, at the police department, in, in the way that this is written. And that was the goal, right? To be sure that we've covered all our bases for, for those things that we know for certain. Is within our control as, as far as we know, as far as our solicitor knows. And so. You know, I think the grander conversation about, again. How to resolve this and what actions we can take to do this. I think we've tried to not come to this, right? That we have to selectively choose to do this. I think we've tried to hope that the conversations we've had previously. Would allow some room also for those who are strongly not understanding. Those who have opposition to this symbology. To, to really understand and appreciate that and step away in the use of it as it is now. But I don't think that's happened for, again, our public servants who serve all. And we're really hoping that that conversation would have led us here. But I think this is where we have to be to, to, to really control what we know we can control. As far as, you know, what else we can do, I don't know. You know, I don't know the answers. I don't know. I don't know if anyone here really knows. I think it's, it's a complicated problem at this point when we're talking about police officers. And their relationship with the symbol and constituents, residents having a difficult relationship with the symbol when they see it associated with authority. You know, I'm hearing a lot of questions from folks about, well, how many people? You know, frankly, it doesn't have to be any if it's the right thing to do, really. The right thing to do here is to not create divides. And also for those who say, oh, they aren't here presently. I also urge you to consider that this is very difficult for people who have a problem with the police. To come forward and speak publicly and reveal themselves as having any sort of problem even. And let's say, you know, again, Jim has said this, or Commissioner Leah said this before, we have the privilege of speaking about science here. That, I would say, is a potential problem that's lighter than much harder, more difficult problems people could be having with their relationship with police. Even something like this, people have expressed that they are uncertain and fearful of presenting themselves publicly. To even have this disagreement, although, as Commissioner Lee said, they could otherwise be wholly supportive of police. And just all told, I think that's, that's the concern about the symbol. As far as what actions we can take, this is what I'm understanding is what we can do. And I think it's right that we move forward in doing that because it's what we're able to do right now.
And what I was saying is that not only does it exist today in our current policy. But the department's done everything we've asked of them. So even when Jim and I met with members of the department last month, they acknowledged, I mean, they're not gonna. Wear the symbol, they're not going, the symbol isn't on township cars, it's not on township property. So as it stands now, they're in accordance with that. They understand that and they respect that. But they also expressed why this symbol means so much to them, to their core deeply. And so they respectfully are holding on and adhering to wanting to display that symbol. Because it means, you know, so much to them outside of township business, outside of township official. And so this tonight, just, it does, it seems punitive, seems heavy-handed. Because it exists today in policy with our, our current uniform policy. And the department has already done and, and recognized that they're not going to display any symbols on official grounds.
I know there have been some constituents who have expressed that they have seen the symbol on the property. On township property when they've interacted with the police and they felt. You know, that they couldn't say directly that there was a problem. And this allows our township manager to address it directly should it come up. I mean, if, if, if they are adhering to it, then it's not a problem.
And I guess, I guess, you know, the, the challenge is, is that as. We debated it briefly, you know, where do the lines end? So if you have people showing up for work and they might have a T-shirt on before they get their uniform on. You know, I don't think that that isn't something that we can necessarily. Regulate or enforce. As Mike brought up, stuff in their car. And so it, it becomes a very blurry line. And again, it doesn't move us any closer towards any sort of resolution on this issue. It just makes that division wider. And the animus greater. So what I would ask is that this board continues to have conversations. Keeps to keep, keep an open mind and continues to listen to other points of view. And figure out ways that we might kind of bring both sides together rather than inflame an issue that is frankly only getting worse.
Chicago, you said there was already a matter of policy. Is that, is that part of a written policy? Is that existing?
No, by way of it not being part of the approved uniform, it's not permitted.
Right. So I know conversations internally came up where it was confirmed that. Per existing policy, it's really not to be worn on duty.
There's specific bars and badges and. I don't know. Chevrons that are permitted. And if you put anything other than that on there, you're in violation.
So if we're codifying this. As part of a formal resolution to implement something you're saying already exists, that doesn't seem like a big overreach to me.
Well, but again, I think the overreach is in the specific, is the specific reference of the symbol.
And we're only dealing with it because it is offensive to many in our community. So that's why it's, that's why it is an issue. Yes, but we're codifying that and saying to those people, yes, we do care about it, and here's what we can control. And the police department already agrees with it, that it shouldn't be part of the uniform. We're at the station or township property, so.
But, but again, Jim, respectfully, I think we're, again, we're confusing the public. Because we're blurring the lines between the police department and the Police Benevolent Association. And I think, I think sincerely, our biggest, our gripe is not with the police department. I think everybody up here appreciates, respects, gives them great credit. And, and, and they certainly do all that. I, I think our, our, our concern here is that when they send out a solicitation for funds letter. And it, and it shows the symbol and says Springfield Township. And that symbol, right or wrong, is offensive to a certain percentage of the population. That, that it, it shines a very, very poor light on both the. Benevolent Association and on the Springfield Township generally. Police, because I think the general public doesn't really understand the difference here. So, I mean, I received numerous letters, one I, I thought was just, you know, from a constituent. And, and he basically says, is the symbol, basically, and this is the, I think, the crust of the whole matter here. Is that the symbol means different things to different people. And there can be people of good faith on both sides of that, of that argument. And, and that's the simplest argument, that it just means different things to different people. And I think myself, if, if it offends, if, if it offends one of my constituents, I'm concerned. As many of us up here are concerned. And that's why, you know, we want it removed. And that's, you know, that's the simplest. My simple explanation of why we've been discussing this for over a year. And there's been so much angst and, and. I hope, I hope whatever we do tonight. Paints a clearer picture.
Sure.
So, as been stated, it's been well over a year. I think the symbol changed somewhere in.
2020, Mike, is that correct?
When he went from the.
The association to the.
Benevolent.
The PBA. Somewhere in that area.
So about a year ago, I was told by one of my former colleagues that I should stand by my convictions. And that's with anything that I do up here. So the first time that I saw the email, and I'm gonna repeat myself from last time. I quickly responded that I want new parts of this discussion or support it. And I was told that you might want to change your mind before it becomes public. Okay. So I stood by my convictions. Took my position on the matter. Because in my opinion, it's not the flag color. It's a red and blue issue. It's a red and blue issue. It's political. Some of us are gonna split hairs so that we can sort of fill that narrative to justify the action. And I stood by my convictions. I don't know about the rest of my colleagues up here. I've never seen them down that hallway. Like I do, having candid conversations with the men and women of the police department. So much so that I've been accused of spreading lies. About a certain commissioner. Behind closed doors. No. No. I don't need to repeat anything. It's all on social media. And there's receipts to prove it. Has anybody ever received an email? That they need to check their whiteness at the door? I have. Did I respond to it? No. Has anybody ever received a 10-page email laced with accusations? Of inviting you five people to a meeting that I'm the organizer of this? I have. I have. But yet, here I sit. Wearing the Springfield Township Police badge on my jacket. Given to me by one of our officers, because I had the courage to stand up and defend them. We've heard. Many times, the words numerous and many mentioned up here. And with this board, in the last year or two, we've heard the term many. Arston Woods, many people, many people. I said, show me the numbers, new numbers. Tonight, we hear numerous and many. What are the numbers? New numbers. Oh, we had some people show up. They weren't from Springfield Township. And they weren't from an organization within Springfield Township. But when you people show up, not allowed to be here. Not allowed to be here. Seven years I've been on this board. I've sat through a lot of interviews and hired a lot of these people. Not once have I seen an Internal Affairs review of a single officer in his police department. But yeah, we're gonna take a symbol. That was hijacked by some moron. And put it on our police department. And we've seen the Rodney King riots, and we've seen what happened to George Floyd. And we'll sit here and say Springfield Township's like that. No, they're not. No, they're not. There's been comments made that it's been seen on our uniforms. Sure, anybody could say that. I don't ever remember seeing a internal matter come from Mike Taylor that we've had officers wearing this on their cars. There are police departments in Pennsylvania that have it on their cars, their uniforms. Springfield Township doesn't have it on their cars or their uniforms. But yet, we're sitting here talking about potentially. Future litigation against the Benevolent Association. And taking away funds that they use to support the children in this township. To defend a legal matter that I'm gonna say from day one, we've had no standing. From day one, this whole thing smelled like a hit piece. No one just coincidentally stopped and saw that banner driving down the street. This thing started weeks before that. This thing started weeks before that. And I'm pretty sure I'm going to get an email tonight from somebody saying, how dare you say this? But this is one man's personal agenda and it's been evident since day one and the receipts are there to prove it. I don't have to send somebody something, it's already out there. I could sit here and say, many of people, many of people. I've heard from like. Any five of my constituents the last twelve months on issues in this township. But yet. I constantly hear comments about things in my word and they're never to me, they're from other people. So I don't know. What's going on? I was not in favor of that letter, for the record, since you asked. I'm not in favor of this resolution. Nor any foreseeable litigation of this police department. Yes, there are people scared of police departments in America. Some of it has to do with a social problem. My youngest daughter was scared of this police department. Because she didn't know what those lights were. And she had a negative incident at one time. And we worked with the police department to calm her. Now she sees him in school and she yells by first name down the hallway and they look at her like this kid's nuts. Have anybody on the board here been at a DUI checkpoint in eight years, seven years? No, don't think so.
Me.
You? I have a couple of them. Quite interesting to watch. When they stop people, I don't see them getting out of the car and going, Blue Lives Matter, I don't trust you. No, no, they got their cellphone up in their face, trying to tell them that they don't know how to do their job. These people have enough to worry about on a daily basis. Thank God. We have a buffer. Actually, you should say some other community should thank God that they have a buffer between them and the DMZ that's behind us. You all sat one of the most interesting interviews for a police officer that you ever had. And one of the recent hires that we had in Philadelphia. Listening to that interview, if that didn't turn your body cold. You have no idea what these men and women could potentially go through in a split second. And the last thing they need on their minds. Is, well, we're going to have to have another meeting night because the board wants a symbol change and we're going to have to spend money and the little league's not getting it tomorrow because of this, that, X, Y, Z. But when they're in public, and I've stood next to them at the Acme, at the Wawa, at the Banks. I never see anybody yelling at them about. This symbol or their benevolent association. And we. We're getting to the point where we're going to start splitting hairs on this. And like I said, it's going to be. Their cars, you know, it's going to get out of hand. So. I understand both sides of the argument, I do. But this argument can be had for a whole lot of things in this country right now. A whole lot of things. I'm not done yet. Thank you.
Excuse me, I thought you were done.
No, I was taking a pause for a second. We've gotten so crazy with things in this country. That. There are people in an uproar last year of a Christmas song. But yet, the number one song in the country was the most offensive thing that I'd ever heard in my life. But we were upset about a Christmas song. And if you don't believe me, Google it. Google it. It's true. I don't think you would want your teenage children listening to the number one song in America that time. But yet, we're going to worry about a song that was written after World War Two. This problem with the symbol is larger than us. This is overreach, in my opinion. There's nothing legally we can do, in my opinion, on this. And we're taking away from organizations that benefit from the benevolent association. At some point. Like Jonathan said, we need to stop pushing. The two parties apart because as tonight, this is what this is doing.
I'm done.
I want to add two things. You know, I don't want to, anyone to take away that anyone here discounts the difficult work of police officers. In general, and the the difficulties they have, like what Commissioner Maxwell describes even at a DUI checkpoint. But on the other side of that coin, there are people in our community, in society. Who also have a gripping experience on the other side of that checkpoint. They just do for a lot of, as you say, social reasons. Very difficult reasons that and and difficult problems that we're not going to solve. Look, no one's going to solve racism overnight, period, right? But those are gripping experiences people have when they face a police officer. And there's no reason why, if there is an affiliation, any affiliation with that symbol. To racist movements or oppressive movements. That we can't control here, what we can with our police department and say, hey, that's not something that we tolerate. So that people in our community can understand that we don't and feel that much safer. Is it going to alleviate all of the concerns they might have? The the wheel that they grip if they face a police officer, whoever they they are. And for whatever reasons their fears of police are. No, but here's what we can control. I will speak to my own experience. You said, no one's driven by a banner and sap and had a reaction. Well, I was a person who did. Just personally, outside of this role here that I play as commissioner. Just as a person, I did see that symbol. I did stop and have a negative reaction to it. It was my experience. I don't think I'm the only one. I know I'm not the only one. And so to say that there's no one, well, I'll vouch for myself, number one. But also, if that is the general tenor of the conversation. Let's say all across this country that, hey, there's a negative affiliation with this symbology in police. And here we are, we have a police department. Can we be sure that our community is assured that we don't have this affiliation? Well, as people have pointed out, it could be a gray area for everyone to, whatever anyone wants to do in their own time. Here on our property, this is what we can control and therefore, we're going to prohibit it here. That's what we can control. But to the general points that, you know, Commissioner Maxwell has to say about whether or not it's. A problem we can control. Yes, I do think it's a problem we can control. Here, this small problem, the greater social problems, no one can solve those problems overnight. I mean, there's just. Many things going on here. But look, I'm not going to shy away from the fact that. There is an affiliation with white supremacy, racism and other issues like that. By many people, by some people, by one person. At least. And that's enough for me to say, hey, we don't want to be affiliated with that. I think we've tried to. Have those conversations and it's led us to what we can control for sure here, as I said earlier.
I'm, I'll just, I'll just say a couple of things. So, you know. Sort of one of these people that until this. Situation came up. A year ago, was brought up to us. I wasn't aware of it in the least. I didn't know anything about the Blue Lives Matter flag. Had never really focused on it. I guess also, my feeling is that. If some two or three people in a township or in your family or work for you or work with you or. Go to school with you or whatever are offended by. Something and it's a private issue or something, you know, that happens all the time. But I guess over the last year or so, I've been more or less persuaded that, you know, this is. More than that and that there are enough people out there in our township and our, in our community that. Have some serious concerns about this, although I will say I don't have any personal. Experience with a lot of this. And I guess my feeling about this is, you know, if if. My son was walking around wearing a symbol that offended people. I would just turn to him and say, hey, do you mind just not doing that? I mean, would that be a good thing to do for your family? And that's how how I was hoping we could solve this with the with the benevolent association. Didn't sort of work that way. I supported the letter that went out. You know, I think perhaps the letter was a little strong, but you know. Hopefully, it would convince them that, you know, maybe we can modify the logo or do something a little different that is going to, you know. Let's say. Hold the fire down a little bit. That didn't happen. So when the question of what else are we going to do about this, you know, I went on record in our, in our executive committee, I said, I'm. Certainly not in favor of litigation, just absolutely not, you know. You know, my father was a federal judge and I lived with the concept that, you know. Litigation solves everything. I lived with that for many years and I don't believe it. Uh, I think there are other ways to solve problems. But when it comes to, you know, is it all right to, you know, write an ordinance which just basically says, you know. Our police officers won't wear this flag. That doesn't bother me, you know, really, if that's as far as it goes. Now, I will say, in listening to everybody in the audience and. My colleagues here, uh, on my left, you know. And having read this resolution. There are some vagaries and 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 issues that aren't answered and and questions that come up as to. How exactly are we going to police this and what are we going to allow people to do or not allow people to do, you know? And I don't think they're answered by this ordinance and. Not that the idea of the ordinance is a bad idea, but I think it needs some work. I think it needs a little more. A little more direction and it has to explain what people are allowed to do or not allowed to do. You know, as opposed to just. You know, you know, I'm not sure it's ignoring that situation, but it, there's a lot of. A lot of questions that are left unanswered by this. So, you know, my feeling is that if we were to adopt a thing like this. I'd like to see. I guess some, some better language or or language that is a little less vague and a little more. I don't know. Would put people's minds at ease as far as what they're allowed or not allowed to do on our public, on our township property. So. Those are my comments.
Well, first off, Mr. Stanish. Your last point is probably a good one. I mean, people did say some good questions that were good questions, including from the audience. One question Commissioner Maxwell had about the cars. There are good questions and, you know, these things can be rife with interpretation and. Uh, it's a sensitive topic, so we should do it right. We should make it clear. So, I mean, I'm. I mean, I'm, I'm on record being in support of it. I'm also not opposed to if we want to clean up the language. So that there isn't any vagueness. I'm open to that discussion.
I'm open to that. I mean, I think those are valid questions. It's, it's questions I had, you know, five minutes before I walked in here myself.
Yep.
So.
Yeah, great. And we're not looking, you know, we're not looking to get into being that, although maybe some people think it's it's unavoidable, but. But, um, I mean, there's a couple of things I just want to clean up. Commissioner Maxwell from your comments. And when Eddie says something in absolutes, I call him out on it and he sometimes he doesn't like it, but. I mean, you made the comment that the people that came. With concerns about it weren't from Springfield Township and that's just not true. There are some. There were some people that came, but there were some residents that did come.
And also, I didn't call you out on my comments, so I appreciate you don't call me out.
Okay, well, I'm just saying, you said that none of them were from Springfield Township and that's just not true.
So we can agree to disagree, just like the symbol.
Okay, well, you can call me out too, but if something's demonstrously false, I'm going to say something. Um, and the people in the audience are allowed to be here. You're allowed to come every time. I haven't heard a commissioner say, don't come or you're not allowed to come. You can come. One thing that that saddens me a little bit about this debate. And even a meeting in April that was, that was really hot and. And fiery and passionate, I felt there were some, you know, some inappropriate things said, but for the most part, I feel like. The issue was new and people got to speak their mind and I felt like people left the room. The little more of understanding of the other side, why, why it bothers them or why they feel that way. But as a general theme, I. I feel some of it is one way. I almost to a T with exception. That when people. Bring up concern of this emblem. They do so. With balancing it with really great respect for the police department and saying, I support police. Or I have family members, please. It's not that we don't like the police, it's the symbol that is bothersome for some way. And I don't feel it goes back the other way too much. And I will say. I've heard more empathy from the actual police officers themselves that I've talked to. And they say, yep, we we kind of get it or I understand where that's coming from and. You know, police department is not a monolith. It's just like we are not, we're individuals. We agree on some things, but everyone sees things a little differently. But I heard at least empathy from them, understanding why. To communities of color, it was problematic, but from a lot of people in public, I don't, not, not a shred of. At least understand why some people don't like it. However, I disagree. And it means more positive and honor and respect. So we disagree. I wish there was more of that. Um, because really, the issue, I think trauma has a lot to do with. With law enforcement. Law enforcement is a really tough business. Especially for the police officers and for a lot of people involved, whether you're a family member of someone who's insane with police. Or you're a family member of a criminal or you're a criminal yourself. It's a high-stress job. It's a high-stress thing in our society. We can't, we can't just escape and pretend that we don't know that people of color in our society. From generations have had discrimination. And there's been racism in our society. It's not over. And some of it's tied to law enforcement historically. It's naive to think that corruption, brutality, racism weren't a part of law enforcement in this country. And that causes generational trauma. Police may have been really nice to you, but you may. Have inherited that in your generation and have a distrust of the police, even if it's not warranted. But it's trauma. And the police have trauma. I mean, I mean, I really can't imagine what it's like to go to work. You just don't know. At any stop. Any moment, your day could be going fine and you get into a jam that you don't know who's trying to hurt you, who's not. You don't want to be the first person to act. You have to react. Police get killed in line of duty. Your partner gets killed in line of duty. You know, we heard from a police officer who talked about his colleague in other department that. Staring down the barrel of a gun and because the chamber had a problem. You know, three clicks and he lived, but he was, he was traumatized by it. I, I mean. Police officers have one of the highest rates of suicide in our country. So I'm not here to tell you the police are the bad guy and picking on everybody. High, one of the highest rates of suicide. They can't take the rigors of the job. That's trauma. So you have two groups at odds about something affected by trauma and you wonder why it's so passionate. And the way, the way, the part that I agree with you, John, is that like. Yeah, you got to find ways to take the temperature down and cool it and all that. But, you know, as someone in power, as an elected official. As a police officer, as a police department that has power over people. I feel you got to take the higher ground. You have to be aware of that trauma and say, all right, I don't necessarily agree with you. Most people support it, some people don't. But we're going to err a little bit on the side of. Protecting our marginalized communities that have been traditionally marginalized in our society. So if we have to give a little more. To heal that trauma. I'm for it. And this is really uncomfortable for me. I don't want to be. Enemy of the police. I grew up around police. I grew up going to the FOP with my dad. Going and did a police academy work there, surrounded by police. I didn't even know the FOP was different than police, probably until later in life. But my dad had. People he worked with that were killed on duty. So I, it just. So I feel like we're in a position of authority. We, we need, we have a higher degree. Of empathy and sensitivity that we need to do. of empathy and sensitivity that we need to do. It is not an Eddie issue. Obviously, it's it's an issue. It's important to Eddie, but it's not solely an Eddie issue. As I've said before, there are several police departments in our country that have that have banned the use or removed the use in their departments. The police departments decided by the chief as policy. So it's not a made up issue in Springfield. And their sentiment was kind of what I'm just saying right now, that we believe it means honor and respect for our police officers that have fallen or that in the line of duty are in harm's way, but we understand that this is a divisive symbol that specifically this variation came to popularity in 2014. It's not up for debate while the Black Lives Matter movement was taking shape. So that matters. The timing of it matters. So what I hear from people of color and I understand is that that symbol represents that 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 movement did not have merit. And that when they see a police officer, I'm not speaking for anyone, I'm just telling you, someone said to me that when they see that, it induces fear that that I'm not being protected. Whether you agree with that or not, that's what people feel and enough people feel it, then I'm up for it and I'm open to it. So it's not an easy answer. It's, like I said, I'm tremendously uncomfortable even talking about it, but I'm not going to let my discomfort stand in the way of my conviction. And I think it's a good policy. It only enforces the policy that we already have. And I wish the PBA would change it. I wish they would see that. I heard them out. I understand their points. I respect the work that they do and the harms way that they put themselves in, but I just, I do feel strongly that this imagery is important to address.
And Mr. President, just because I think it's important to reiterate, this board, this township, this department has been unequivocal in their condemnation of hatred and bigotry and you know, any sort of racism on several occasions, we reiterate that to emphasize that. This department specifically has done everything that we've asked of them as far as expanding civilian oversight, as far as adopting body cameras, as far as implementing, you know, all sorts of training. You know, I think to a individual, everyone in that department echoes all of the words that you shared. And I think that is, you know, leadership that we've shown, but also the department as a whole has shown as well. I just ask, have any of these actions taken as part of this debate done anything to help make this situation better? And I would argue fiercely that they've only made it worse. And by continuing down this road, what we're going to see is we're going to see more flags. Maybe not in the part of, you know, individual department members, but more flags in our community. We're going to see again a further divide between the two sides. And so I would ask that I agree with the sentiment of what you shared. You know, things that we can do to make this better, ideas that individual members in the department brought up. You know, I mean, like fostering ways for the community and the department to interact with in a fun way, in a way that gets people in front of each other so they can have these conversations so that they can listen to both sides. And that list is long, but but again, none of the, none of the solutions or, you know, what we're debating tonight and have debated over the last year have done anything to make the situation better. They really have only made it worse.
And I would just add that I don't think that this is the end of it anyways, that it is inevitable that bringing people together is something that we as good leaders should and will, you know, try to facilitate. I think it's necessary. It's going to be necessary no matter what because it, you know, the divide is already present. It's not an unknown. The divide is present and we have to to heal it as a community for sure. And that's inevitable. So to the point that you say that this is not helpful, I think I disagree to the extent that it is helpful for those who feel like the only way to come to that space would be to not have a divisive symbol on the other side of the table. I think I can't ask in in good faith, those who associate the symbology with something nefarious to come forward and and already jump a hurdle of fear to even come forward by by themselves for just to present themselves as someone who has a concern about the police or their interactions with it, to then come forward and and really feel like their conversation is going to be heard in good faith as well. I don't think that that's how people really work i- in this space. That's not how people really feel. They cannot just come to a space where they see something in true opposition to them and feel like their feelings and thoughts are going to be heard. And I think that's why this this action is necessary to the extent that, could we clean up the language a little bit and clarify? Sure. I mean, I think that's fair and reasonable. But I do think it's unfortunately necessary because a year has gone on without any other forward movement. And I really appreciate Commissioner Lee's eloquent remarks on this that I feel like I haven't been able to do, but that you did so eloquently. So my thoughts.
So it sounds like at least for me to agreement of cleaning up the language and
Sure.
revisiting this before we take official action. Either you feel strongly about moving.
If that's the will of the war.
I'm okay with that.
I mean, I think that's that's fair to clean up the language. I think I had some questions myself to to be clear about against whom and for whom and all of that. So I think that's fine. But I do think that the sentiment of the the symbol being divisive has been made many, many times and that this is not something that we wish to be affiliated with our police department at this time. I think that's, they already know that. Everybody knows that. So cleaning up the language on the ordinance should be part of that.
So it's only we consensus to, you know, revisit and revise and bring it back next month. So do we have to take any?
Yeah, you have a motion. Yeah, you have a motion on the table and a section already. So we can either
We have to vote on it.
Deal with that.
Okay. All right. Any other questions or comments? We've also All right. So I'll just make the comment that a couple of people have talked about cleaning up the language. So if, you know, and I'll do the same. I intend on voting no to clean up the language and address some of the good questions that came up. So all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All opposed, say nay. Nay. The motion does not pass. Please record a zero six vote. Did I hear that correctly from you guys too?
The motion was
Nay.
It was a nay.
Everybody was a nay. We already made the motion, so we were voting on the president.
We just made a motion to not
So you said nay?
If anything about
Not adopted.
Yeah.
Please record a zero to six.
Yeah. We don't need to make a motion about cleaning the language. We can just do what we want and
Correct.
Make a motion.
All right, great.
Yeah.
All right. All right. That concludes my report. Hopefully that's the longest one. Now we'll go to the chairman of the Community Development Committee, Commissioner Standish.
Thank you, Mr. President. So first, I move the Board of Commissioners to appoint Al Conley Jr. to a new three-year term of service as a member of the Springfield Township Historical Commission. Mr. Conley's new term of service shall expire December 31st, 2025. That is my motion.
Have a motion. Is there a second? Any questions or comments?
I was just being confident. Mr. Conley is an absolute buff of knowledge for this historical commission. I think there is made that clear.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, great.
Yep.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Please record a six zero vote.
Okay, next, under cover letter of November 1st, 2022, T. Scott Crallack informed the Board of Commissioners that he will be concluding his time as a member of the Historical Commission at the conclusion of his current term of service in order to focus his attention on his business. The Board of Commissioners thanks Mr. Crallack for contributing his time and talents towards the betterment of the Springfield Township community. Is he coming on Thursday night? I hope he is.
I'm aware.
Okay, all right. Well, we're going to miss Scott. He's been along with everybody else on that committee. Really, really a guiding light. So we're going to miss him. Next, I move that the Board of Commissioners appoint Heather Snyder Killinger to a new three-year term of service as a member of the Springfield Township Historical Commission. Ms. Snyder Killinger is presently an alternate member of the commission and her new term of service as a full member shall expire December 31st, 2025. That is my motion.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Please record a six zero vote.
Okay, and finally, with the appointment of Ms. Snyder Killinger as a regular member of the Historical Commission, there presently exists a vacancy as an alternate member of the Historical Commission. Alternate members attend and participate in all meetings of the commission as a non-voting member and may participate as a voting member in the absence or conflict of a regular member. And I might intercede that I don't remember us ever taking a vote in two years on anything. So anyway, resident, any resident who is interested in serving as an alternate member of the Historical Commission is encouraged to submit a letter of interest and or resume to the attention of Michael Taylor, Township Manager, 1510 Paper Mill Road, Winmore, PA 19038, or via the township website, www.springfieldmonco.org. And that is my report for this evening.
Thank you, Commissioner Standish. We'll now go to the Chairman of the Environmental Resources Committee, Commissioner Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Pleased to report that during the month of November 2022, Springfield Township residents recycled 203.1 tons of materials with a household participation rate of 67.3%. The net cost of the township was $28,596.97. I would remind the board that during the month of November, there were two holidays there, which screwed up the collections a little bit, where usually a much higher 6%. And I've also been asked to read Commissioner Graham's report on the Library Advisory Committee. And this is a motion. I move that the Board of Commissioners in Springfield Township reappoint Reenie Brooks and Adam Hess to new three-year terms of service as members of the Springfield Township Library Advisory Committee. The new three-year terms of service shall expire December 31st, 2025. That is my motion.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Please record a six zero vote.
That concludes my reports.
Thank you, Commissioner Wilson. We will go to the Chairman of the Public Works and Facilities Committee, Commissioner Maxwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have one item season, Resolution Number 1586, the PA Small Water and Sewer Grant. I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt Resolution Number 1586, authorizing an application to the Pennsylvania Small Water and Sewer Grant Program in the amount of $404,562 to be used for Phase Two of the Terminal F Stormwater Sewer Improvement Project. To the extent that the grant proposal is funded by the Commonwealth, it is the township's intention to construct a new storm sewer system on Terminal F from its intersection with Montgomery Ave to Yaco Avenue. The total cost of the project is estimated to be $475,955 and is intended to improve stormwater capture and conveyance and reduce public and private property flooding in the Erdnheim section of the township. That is my motion.
You have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any questions or comments? I do have a question, just out of curiosity. Do we have any sense of probability of award? Like, is this a kind of deal where if it meets it, we get it, but it's
They're all competitive.
Okay. Okay. And this is part of ARPA, right?
Yes.
Right, okay. So just to know for the public, this is an addition, a newer program for ARPA funds through the state specifically for these type of projects does not affect the ARPA money we already received. A lot of which, some of which is going towards other stormwater projects.
Mr. President, it should be noted that this is, you know, the second phase of a a much larger program that we did about two or three years ago, which expanded the pipes on
Eight or nine years ago, right?
Wasn't that long ago?
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Please record a six zero vote. These are all shutouts so far.
One way or another.
That will conclude my report for this evening.
Thank you, Commissioner Maxwell. Next, we'll go to the Chairman of the Administrative Fiscal Affairs Zoning Committee, Commissioner Cobb.
Hey, Mr. President. First, regarding the bill listing, I moved that the Board of Commissioners approved the November check reconciliation in the amount of $597,728.96 and the December bill listing in the amount of $649,687.3. And that's my motion.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Please record a six zero vote.
Next, Resolution Number 1587 regarding the Citizens Bank Account. I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt Resolution Number 1587, authorizing the Township Manager to close an obsolete bank account with Citizens Bank having a present balance of $4.26. The bank account was established as a sinking fund for a capital loan that was issued in the amount of $550,000 in 2010. That loan was paid off in 2020 and the bank account is no longer utilized. That's my motion.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments on the motion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Please record a six zero vote.
Next, I move that the Board of Commissioners authorize membership in the Pennsylvania Local Government Investment Trust, hereforth known as Pilgit, as a single depository for endowment funds to benefit the Free Library of Springfield Township. Presently, those funds are held in nine separate certificates of deposit at three different banks. The principal amount of each CD ranges from $1,000 to $30,000 and combining the sums for investment purposes will yield higher interest returns. That's my motion.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Questions or comments?
Mike, were these the ones that came up unexpectedly that nobody knew about? No, no, we've known about these. Yeah. They were required when it was the Free Library of Springfield Township was an independent body and we assumed them when we took over the library as an operating department.
Other comments? Okay, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Please record a six zero vote.
All right. Next, I move that the Board of Commissioners authorize an increase in the hourly rates and quarterly retainer charge by the township solicitors follows. Regular municipal rates from $165 to $180 an hour. Litigation rates from $175 to $190 an hour. A legal retainer from $7,500 to $8,500 a quarter. And the proposed rates will become effective beginning January 1st, 2023. The hourly rates were last increased in 2017, while the legal retainer has remained the same since 2012. A survey conducted by township staff has confirmed that the new rates are in line with those paid by other Montgomery County municipalities. And that's my motion.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? That letter would have been more expensive this year. If you erase. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Please record a six zero.
Next, the 2023 agency meeting schedule will remain the same as the 2022 meeting schedule of the Board of Commissioners and Township Agencies. The Board of Commissioners will continue to meet each month on the second Wednesday at 7:30 PM and on the Monday preceding the second Wednesday at seven o'clock. Both meetings will take place at Springfield Township Administration Building. A complete list of the meeting schedule is available upon request and the meeting schedule will also be posted and advertised in the Ambler Gazette. Next, regarding this month's zoning hearing board, the zoning hearing board will meet on Monday, December 19th at 7:00 PM in this Springfield Township building. That will be held one week earlier than usual due to the Christmas holiday, which will be observed by the township on December 26th. At that meeting, At that meeting, the following application will be heard from Robert Orsher, owner of property located at 8209 Ardmore Avenue in Winmore. The applicant is requesting a dimensional variance, seeking to construct in addition to the existing single-family dwelling that will reduce one of the side yard setbacks from 26.8 feet in width to four feet in width. In addition, the second side yard setback is proposed to be reduced from 23.2 feet in width to 16.11 feet. This will reduce the cumulative side yard setback from 50 feet in width to 20.1 feet instead of the required 35 feet. And that property is owned within the A Residential District of Ward 2. Copies of all of that application and all applications are on file in the Code Enforcement Office and can be viewed during normal business hours. Regarding that application for 8209 Ardmore Avenue, I move that the Board of Commissioners authorize the Office of the Township's Listener to attend all future meetings of the zoning hearing board in order to represent the interests of the Board of Commissioners in opposition to the petition filed by Robert Orsher at 8209 Ardmore Avenue. Mr. Orsher is requesting variances to reduce the required side yard setbacks. That's my motion.
Motion has been made, is there a second?
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Please record a six zero vote.
And finally, I move that the Board of Commissioners reappoint Ed Fox to a new three-year term of service as a member of the Springfield Township Zoning Hearing Board. Mr. Fox's new term of service shall expire on December 31st, 2025. That's my motion.
Motion has been made, is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments?
Quick comment, meetings that I've attended with Mr. Fox, Mr. Fox is currently the president of the zoning hearing board and his calm demeanor, particularly with residents who show up at the zoning hearing board for the first time and I think are as I was as well, taken by the formality of the process. His calm demeanor is very settling and for, can be a very nerve-wracking experience, so. I just think he's an exemplary representative for the township in that role and am delighted at him getting another term.
Great, thank you, Commissioner Cobb. Any other questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Please record a six zero vote.
And thank you, Mr. President, that's my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Cobb. We will go to the Chairman of the Parks and Recreational Resources Committee, Commissioner Ratzavon.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two motions before us today. First, a move that the Board of Commissioners authorize the creation of an ad hoc committee to be known as the Recreation Center Advisory Committee. The purpose of the committee is to assist the township with the creation of a master plan to accommodate current and future programs and activities held at the Recreation Center and to provide technical assistance and recommendations on the selection of an architect or planner for that purpose, as well as other assistance that may be needed during the planning process. In conjunction with the creation of the committee, the Board of Commissioners previously met with the following residents who shall serve on the committee. Joy Bergy of Flower Town, Sarah La Judas of Erdenheim, Edward Moore's third of Winmore, Jay Overcash of Winmore, Arthur Walters of Winmore, and Beth Zenick of Winmore. A representative from the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee will also serve on the committee. That is my motion.
Sorry, was that made?
That was my motion.
Sorry, thank you, I just didn't hear the last part. Motion has been made, is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments?
I just commented that, you know, we're thrilled to take this on. I think I think Commissioner Cobb said earlier this week that this could be a real priority for us and it's a really exciting venture. All of the individuals listed have a wonderful submitted resumes and backgrounds, some of whom have actually done this before in their professional work. And again, we've said this many times, that we are very lucky in this township to have this wealth of capital, of human capital to share their talents with us in this capacity. So looking forward to launching this committee.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Please record a six zero vote.
The next motion I have is about the Springfield Little League. I move that the Board of Commissioners authorize a Springfield Little League baseball organization to construct a 4,900 square foot pole barn at Beicher Fields in Flower Town. The building will replace two existing outdoor batting cages that are in poor condition and will be utilized as an indoor practice facility for Little League baseball and softball programs. Approval to construct the facility is conditioned upon the Little League securing all necessary construction permits, the installation of stormwater management facilities in a form satisfactory to the township engineer, and an emergency access route that shall be approved by the fire marshal. In addition, prior to occupancy of the building, the Little League shall enter into an agreement with the township to memorialize the hours of operation and other details to minimize any impacts on the adjacent neighborhood. That is my motion.
Motion has been made, is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments?
Quick comment. Seems like the board was on board with this Monday night. And it's nice to see that, especially in a day and age where little leagues are not bound by boundaries anymore, so you're free to go wherever you so choose. And unfortunately, a lot of municipalities lose out on the children in their community because the good other municipalities who have facilities like this, so the merger of the two little leagues was a positive step in this. And it's just like the work that's being done for the Little League softball, I mean. I know sometimes residents can be a little nervous about changes to our properties, but you know, these are the types of things people look at when they look, you know, to move into Springfield Township, so it's nice to see that we can support this.
When did, when did they make it that you could go to different?
I've been away for a few years now, yeah.
And for the general public, my understanding is that the batting cages will also have generally open batting cages that anyone can go and use when they're not, of course, in use by the Little League itself.
Which they have now that they'll relocate.
Right, that they're really, well, it's attached, I guess, to the backside of what they're building, so it's wonderful to receive that investment.
Great. Any other questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Please record a six zero vote.
And before I conclude my report, just wanted to give a shout out to all those individuals and families who've been submitting to the Holiday Lights competition, and I think that's still ongoing, right, Mike?
Yes.
There's still two, one week, two weeks left. Two weeks left, I think, till the end of the month. So it's been lovely and a shout out to, I think, Jamie, who's been coordinating that for the second year, standing. And also, a shout out to the Winmore Host Company who hosted their tree lighting on Monday. Obviously, not tense, but I heard it was a great event and some local businesses contributed to that as well, and it's just great to see all that activity. I think now concluding Parks and Recs, you know, my first year doing this and launching next year's Parks and Rec conversations, we've talked a lot about just more community events like that and any way we can work together to really facilitate that. I hope we can continue to find ways to to do more of those sorts of things. And in the meantime, appreciate that there's wonderful organizations and individuals committed to doing it like host company. So thank you for that and thanks for the tree lighting.
Thank you, Commissioner Ratzavon.
That concludes my report.
Thank you. At this point, a public comment is now once again opens. If you have a public comment, come on down. I see some movement.
Okay, my name's Elizabeth Wallace, I'm 7908 Pine Road in Winmore. I just wanted to say about the resolution that now is no longer, it's not been passed. But from all the comments of the commissioners here and of the public, I took some hope actually from this discussion. It's the first time I've been able to take some hope from these discussions over the past year. And the reason is this, I think Jonathan Cobb mentioned that the police offered ideas to work with the community. Jim, you mentioned that actually in your talks with the officers, they showed a lot of empathy for those who view this, this flag differently. And Mike, you mentioned your own experience with your daughter and with the police who came and helped her understand that she doesn't have to be scared. Those things are huge. And I think, I think there's a lot to work with the police on this. My feeling is that litigation does not resolve social issues very well at all. So if we could work on those gems that, you know, the police are empathetic to those in our community who are afraid of the flag basically and its meaning, that they've actually offered some ideas about working with the community and they've shown with Mike's daughter that they can do that. I think that's a way open. That's a way open for commissioners, it's the way open for the community. And I would really love to see some way in which we could move in that direction quickly. I think it's a real good thing, very helpful.
Great, thank you. Any other comments from the public? At this time, I would accept a motion to adjourn the meeting, knowing that we will have our budget hearing once this meeting concludes.
I'll make that motion.
Motion has been made, is there a second?
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Please record a six zero vote. Okay, folks, at this time, I would accept another motion, this one to convene a public hearing on the 2023 budget.
I'll make that motion.
Motion has been made, is there a second?
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Please record a six zero vote. Okay. We are in the budget hearing. Does it feel different?
Yeah.
Purpose of the budget hearing, the hearing is being held in compliance with Section 1701 of the Pennsylvania First Class Township Code as last amended. Sole purpose of the budget hearing for the Board of Commissioners to receive public comment 2023 preliminary budget. The legal requirements associated with the budget hearing have been met by publishing a budget notice in the Ambler Gazette issues of November 20th, 2022, and making the budget available for public review in the Township Building and Library Building. 2023 preliminary budget of Springfield Township is $18,697,151. The proposed real estate rate is 4.516 mils and earned income tax rate of 1.0%. An annual refuse service fee of $242.96. This time, we will accept testimony from the public. Okay. Hearing none, we will have a closing statement. All testimony taken in this budget hearing will be considered by the Board of Commissioners. A special meeting is scheduled to close the business of 2022 and adopt the 2023 budget of Springfield Township later this evening and not much later. Okay, I would accept a motion to close the budget hearing and open a special meeting to close out the business 2022 and adopt the 2023 budget.
Make that motion.
Motion has been made, is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments?
Only comment I would make, Mr. President, is just to reiterate and emphasize the fact that the tax rate will be staying the same and will not be going up and highlighting that.
Right. That is correct. No change in our township real estate tax, the slight increase to the annual refuse fee. Thank you, Commissioner Cobb. Any other questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Please record a six zero vote. And open, so we're already opened.
You're open, ready to go.
Okay.
Ready to go.
We're open.
Number two.
All right. Okay, we are now in the special meeting. We have all sorts of categories of meetings for you tonight, for your pleasure. Purpose here is to close out the business of 2022 and adopt 2023 budget. 2023 budget is $18,697,151 with a real estate tax rate 4.516 mils and earned income tax rate of 1.0%. The average household with a real estate tax assessment of $175,400 will realize no change to the, in their 2023 real estate tax. After decreasing by $6.44 in 2022, the refuse service fee will increase by $12.81 with an annual fee set at $242.96. At this time, we will accept public comment. Don't be shy. Okay, hearing done, we will move into our resolutions. So first resolution, 1589, Commissioner Standish.
Thank you. This concerns a Flower Town Country Club lease. I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt Resolution Number 1589, a resolution citing, setting forth the reconciliation of the 2022 rental income and expenses of the Flower Town Country Club and authorizing the transfer of a net receipts generated from the operation of the country club of $115,983.41 from the Township's General Fund to the Township's Capital Reserve Fund. On an annual basis, Township reconciles the rental income generated from the lease of the country club with any expenditures incurred during the year. From 2006 to 2022, gross rental income has exceeded $1,705,423 and resulted in a net transfers exceeding $908,000 that are presently held in the Capital Reserve Fund for future capital needs. So that is my motion.
Now the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments?
Is the, is the excess of the 908 held in the Capital Reserve just to be allowed to be spent on the country club, or is it can be spent in any capital program Township undertakes?
There's a certain portion of it that are dedicated towards a capital needs assessment that the board had funded many years ago to plan for the replacement of roofs and air conditioning units and things of that nature, so that's somewhat appropriated or encumbered for that purpose. And then there's an unappropriated reserve that's significantly less, but it's still about $120,000.
That can be used for any.
Correct.
And has any of the, any of the funds been used for HVAC and roofing repairs?
There's been periodic capital needs that have come up that we've utilized the funds for, but you haven't had to dig into any township taxpayer-type funds. It's all money that's been generated from the property.
Yeah. Are we looking for any, are we looking forward to any events that would, you know, they precipitate spending a lot of that money on those kind of things?
So when the initial lease with the current operator came into play, they invested over $700,000 into the facility in the form of a dining room addition, the construction of a deck and some other improvements to the building. But we're, believe it or not, coming up on 25 years within a couple of years. So, you know, the roofs and things that were replaced at that time are going to certainly need to get addressed at some point come soon.
Okay.
Have we had a, any, any professionals look at the building with regard to those needs?
So we have a maintenance contract with a roofing company that comes down and they inspect it every year. As you know, a portion of it is a slate, a slate roof, so that's kind of a specialized area of repair. That's in reasonably good shape and whatever they identify on an annual basis, we repair. That's part of the money that you spent this year to, for the, for the building, preventive maintenance. The flat roofs, though, I mean, we know they're coming up, it's, it's time. You know, we've done some ceiling and some perimeter repairs, but inevitably, we're going to need to replace the roof on the dining room. It's coming. The AC units, we replaced one of those this year. It's a smaller one, not one of the real big ones, but they go bad periodically. There's several of them.
Yes. And all the coping and the tile work and the, that was done in the pool last, last season?
That's in good shape. The pool's in good shape. The piping and the coping and the operator painted it this year. So we're in pretty good shape with the pool.
Okay.
Right.
See, I was just going to reiterate, though, that the, the operator management has continued to put investment in the club above and beyond what they're initially putting upon assuming the management. And this does remain outside of property taxes, the largest part of sort of our revenue that's generated for the township. So grateful for that.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Please record a six-zero vote. Next, we'll go to Resolution Number fifteen ninety, Commissioner Cobb.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt Resolution Number fifteen ninety, a resolution reconciling twenty-twenty-two expenditures that may be over-expended with unencumbered balances of certain expenditure items and revenues received in excess of budgetary projections. Sentence that we have for our household, too. The general fund, actual expenses of fifteen million, seven hundred and thirty-five thousand, two hundred and three dollars and ninety-eight cents were reconciled within the unencumbered balance of expenditures of six hundred and thirty thousand, five hundred and forty-six dollars and two cents. The budget expenses for two thousand and twenty-two were sixteen thousand, three hundred and sixty-five doll- excuse me, sixteen million, three hundred and sixty-five thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. I had it read the first time.
Yeah.
No, that's right.
Feel like Ron Burgundy reading.
Made a lot of money this year.
That is my motion.
You have a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Please record a six-zero vote. Starting to have a hard time pronouncing signify, as you're saying it so many times. Thank you, Commissioner Cobb. We will go to ordinance number nine-seven-two, Commissioner Ratzavon.
Thank you, Mr. President. The adoption of the two thousand and twenty-three tax rate and budget appropriations. I move that the Board of Commissioners enact ordinance number nine-seven-two, setting the two thousand and twenty-three real estate tax rate of four point five one-six mills, and that expenses of the township for two thousand and twenty-three are appropriated from revenues as set forth in a table attached to and made a part of ordinance number nine-seven-two. That is my motion.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Please record a six-zero vote. All right, last one, see if we can get a perfect shutout. Next is Resolution Number fifteen ninety-one, Commissioner Maxwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have Resolution Number fifteen ninety-one, setting the refuse service fee two thousand and twenty-three. I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt Resolution Number fifteen ninety-one, a resolution setting the two thousand and twenty-three refuse service fee of two hundred and forty-two dollars and ninety-six cents for each residential dwelling unit. That is my-
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Please record a six-zero vote. Okay, that concludes the special meeting agenda. At this time, I will accept a motion to adjourn the special meeting.
Make that motion.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments on that particular motion? Please signify, support the motion. Please signify by saying aye. What, you think this was coffee? All right. Please signify your support by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Please record a six-zero vote.
All right.
Use, and I am out of here. I forgot to mention that I appreciate the snowflake sticker on our books.
I got Holly.
Oh, you got Holly.
Yeah, I got a-
Jolly stocking. Got a smelly sock.
We off? We're done.
Yeah.